Just do it on that. Sure. Get the twenty months? No, to come. Hold this one here. She can get it. Just take a shot. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Just. (coughs) All right. I'm going to just start with things. It's up. I'll do the video. She, happy. You want to like, take a second and hold on. Yeah, go on, hold on. Ha, that just made it. Please refer to just today for someone who lives out of town. Not even who anybody was. Oh, anyway, I, I got, I went through the town reports. And you did that because you don't know who they are. Feature. He spent a year with his folks. He all day, right? So. So is this, what is this? It was an attached road report. It says.
Road report.
Eight twenty-one. Yeah, yeah, the pictures. Jimmy just wrote that up. Oh, it was Jimmy. Road report. Eight twenty-one? That's from the road committee. That's from what? That's from the road committee. Thank you. There's a, oh, yep. Okay, it says six twenty-nine and a half. Guess I'll wait thirty seconds. She says. One more. Happy anniversary. Just another day in the works. I see. Yes, again.
Does he want to? Do I want to?
No, um, he likes being by himself. He's good. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we specifically have this meeting to talk about road work tonight, and we're going to be meeting weekly from here on out till we get things in order and get things placed and set up and organized. So it's very important that the town knows that this is our priority. So that's the reason we're meeting on our off week, and I really appreciate everyone being here. We've done the first two, so number three, road repair. Is there someone here from the road committee that wants to give an update?
Yes, we had a meeting last night and we agreed to crack that off a bit. So that was major accomplishment there. And some of the other roads that need repaired now, I don't know how you're going to go along with it. The Mahoney Road is still there with branches stuck in it. So many of Mahoney went down in Portobello. We got coal patch that needs to go out. Need grading that has to be done. So I don't know how you're going to get that accomplished.
So basically, we've asked the road commissioner to give us a list of priority roads and how much he thinks it's going to cost, and then we were ready to let him go and work. So has he been able to attend your meetings?
No, I never seen him at all. Never heard of him. Kathy's had more to do than I have, having been. So I'm going to have fun, so we just reach out.
Does the road committee, I see that this is from the road committee. Is this the priority roads in order of most important or is this just a list of priority roads?
It's just a list of priority. We need something to go by when we get done with this. When we get Pratt Hill done, we need to get a lot. We need to have a list of stuff that we need to do and we'll prioritize and move that. The ones that are priority roads right now are the ones I just mentioned, Mahoney Road and the ditches. Putting the coal patch in, especially at Town Farm. The Archen Road is really wicked too, Mahoney. I mean, I know there's a lot, a lot, a lot of people living here, but that is really, really bad road.
Which end?
Uh, they said by the Archen Road.
That first path.
First, yeah.
Okay. So Mahoney Road, and then you said.
Yeah, and then we got, you know, we got grading to do.
Right, I'm, we're just trying, I'm trying to make a short list.
Mahoney Road would probably be the most direct to get down that.
Okay, and Coal Patch, which we already have.
Right. It's going to be pretty cold by the time we get to that point where it works.
Yeah. Yeah, we did, but I don't think he started yet.
We need to work out a list of where you want the coal patch to.
Right.
Tomorrow morning we're meeting on Pratt Hill. The Mahoney Road Committee Board wants to show up, we're going to talk about it. And then we're going to go back and redo the bid spec.
Okay.
That's the process that we're going to use.
When do you think that, and I'm not pushing you, but I am. When do you think that bid spec will be ready? That we can look at it and then, because I don't want to wait till next week if I have to.
Select board. Well, we'll get to it at the next select board meeting. How about that?
Too long.
Too long.
It does, it sounds too long.
I don't understand that, but we have, this thing, we, we've installed all this time.
I know, I know. I want the, I want the people on Pratt Hill to understand, to know that they're sorry.
It's not our fault.
Is it possible to make it available to us as soon as it's finished?
Soon as it's finished, we'll have it available. But I'm just saying for sure, I'll have to get the next select board meeting.
Okay.
We may actually have it done by the weekend, but we have to meet tomorrow. We need the first maybe bid committee to go down those roads in the five weeks.
Sure. No, we appreciate all that. I'm just trying to.
We already have a plan. Me and Kathy talked a lot about it.
I saw, I saw the meeting, yes, yep.
Kathy, go ahead.
We decided to break it up into two sections. With bids, because we're in so late in season, we'd never get a paving crew yet.
Right.
So if we tore up half of the, going down the hill, half it's tied and the other half isn't. So if we broke that all up and added gravel, then if we had more rainstorms, then that virgin gravel would end up still when the ditches head out. So this way, a plan is putting the bid up for making that hill smooth, smooth it up to go for the winter. Change the, change out the culverts that need to be changed out and put riprap in around the outlet of the culverts.
And do the ditching all the way down to the road.
So that would be one section of bidding. In the spring, they'll do the whole road. The rest of the road will get ready for paving.
That would be chewing it off and get ready for paving, how back there.
So but we, the, the work we'd be doing this fall would not be in vain. We're not going to undo that work in the spring.
We need to do this.
No, no. Okay, get that mess up, let's do tomorrow. Block it, get it ready, measure.
Yep. Excellent.
We got to get the culverts in before winter because they're going to need to settle over winter because you're not supposed to pave over fresh culverts. You can't wait until spring.
Of course not, no. We need to protect the pond and.
So we have a plan, just give us a little time, everything is very long.
Yep.
And, and the water runoff? Is that factored into the claim tomorrow as well?
Yeah, and we have one culvert that would probably put it across the driveway because that's part of the ditch. We already talked a little about, we doesn't have a culvert here now. But I think Kathy's seen it, shown it to you. Because hopefully we have the same page.
I, I think it's very important.
We'll change out that four footer.
Right.
Good. I think it's really important that we communicate with the people on Pratt Hill. I do not like the comments that are coming from the town saying, "This was done, I got home and it wasn't even asked." That they do this or move this, sir. I want to make sure we're communicating.
We are.
Okay? As we move forward, that the people know that it's going to happen.
Thank you.
Um, in yesterday's meeting, Al, you had mentioned that we're there to save money. We are really, when it comes to Pratt Hill, it needs to be done the right way. If we don't do it the right way, then it's going to wash down.
I'm just saying that.
At a fast.
Yeah. We just want me to say the town being pointed, but we're not going to cut my pond, believe me. We're going to do it right. There's been roads in the town that haven't really, really done right and it'd be good, it lasts a long time.
Well, this has to be one of them because we did a lot of work two years ago and a lot of it is all gone.
Rickard Hill has been great road. The bottom of Town Farm, down to Davis Pit from, from, down the bottom of that road.
I just want to make sure we're following good standards, that's all.
Right, those are good roads. Those, those are held up really well. So we just got to stay with those standards. Thank you.
Anything you want to add regarding Pratt Hill?
Nope.
Is there anything you want to add regarding Pratt Hill?
Nope.
Okay. One of the things we've been asking for since June is a list of priority roads and how much we think that's, how much our road commissioner thinks that's going to cost to fix those priority projects. And from the very beginning, we've talked about how the townspeople cut the road budget by thirty percent trying to make it so that we're not going up to our eyeballs and raising taxes so high that families can't afford to live here. So we really do need that list of priority. Let him go out with a cost and approve it. There's no freezing of funds. We just need to know what's going to be spent, not after the fact, before the fact. And I want to say that live because we've not frozen any funds. We've asked for priority roads, what he thinks that's going to cost, and then we want to approve it before he spends it. So I don't think there's been any change to that plan, and if there is, I need to know about it.
Diane, you spent some time with Ben yesterday. Did you come up with some ideas with him?
I did, and he decided to not do any detailed definition of the road.
So I know there was a list and it was down here, how many jobs and how, what you could use.
He opted not to, not to get a detailed list to decide.
Do we have any idea why he's not here this evening? Is he sick? Is he? Peggy?
When he says that, is he saying that as road commissioner or as the contractor? Because he has two different roles, right? And I don't know, I mean, as a contractor, he would have the right to say he doesn't want to do anything like that, but I don't know what the responsibility is as a road commissioner in that kind of request.
Well, every other town operates often, they know how much they're going to spend or at least a ballpark before they spend it. They don't just get a bill and, and, "Oh, I didn't even know we were working on those roads." What we're asking for, we don't want to, we want to make sure we have enough money for Pratt Hill to be done right. We also want to make sure that we have some priority roads like Mahoney and Coal Patch for Town Farm. And I'm sure some of these roads need to be graded, but a priority list is not anything hard. This is what's part of the road commissioner list, that he works with the road committee, develops a list of priorities and a ballpark price, and presents them to the select board.
Well, when we start riding, when we start riding around here, we got some culverts that are clogged. I mean, they're definitely just totally clogged. You want to come, I walked by today, the reason why that moon washed out when they're coming down the hill, it was a culvert right at them, not too far from there, that's plugged up solid.
Well, we can talk about all these roads, but we need a priority list, so.
Right, we will give it to you, but we need, you know, well, we'll give it to you now.
Oh, so we. And then you. Go ahead, Dave.
Dave, you know, I was empowered as the road commissioner, secretary of road. Secretary of road committee secretary to prioritize what we've talked about the other night at a twenty-one August meeting. And the biggest one was the Mahoney Road that was brought up by yourself and Diane. And I went down there this afternoon, took a look at it, and that is a major tributary into Little Bear Pond that comes from all the eastern, western slope of Bear Mountain. Crosses Mahoney, and that's a very big culvert. I've got the size in there. But it's, it's substantial and it's, it's classic and it's, it's in good shape. But apparently the extreme runoff episodes we had in the rainfall.
Sure.
Gouged out around that inlet, which is on the left-hand side of the road when you're going down, which is the eastern side. And the western side's fine, but the road itself is pretty wide and it's kind of crowded where the end of the culvert used to be because of grading. I mean, they, they keep spreading the road out when they grade. They don't pull it in and crown it, so the road is extremely wide. But the, the issue is, there is definitely some erosion in there and it, it's not a problem for normal rainfall at this time, but it's definitely a road hazard. And there's two stakes driven into the ground with orange ribbon on it. And we'll take a look at that tomorrow when the group goes out. We'll be right around the corner at Pratt Hill, so we'll have the whole team take a look at that. But I think we're going to have to probably somehow either barricade that or whatever, but we'll let the experts take a look at it. So that is definitely something that's either going to have to be probably a top priority of back roads, and we'll, you know, probably have to put that out to bid. So that's definitely one of them. Do you want to say something?
That's the number one road priority after Pratt Hill?
Yes.
Or during Pratt Hill?
During Pratt Hill. That has a precedence on Pratt Hill.
Yeah, I was empowered at the last meeting because at least prioritize what I.
You're either going to put big riprap in there or drop some big blocks.
Yeah, that's a possibility. Right.
Yeah, okay.
If you don't have veins when you're coming into something like that, it's going to keep eroding. Even with sixteen's riprap, it doesn't seem like we can buy a box and put in there.
Diane?
So the capacity right now going through that culvert, it's probably one-fourth of what it can be. So that stream can come way up, but that's a big watershed going up Bear Pond. You know, heading in backwards, can't, I guess you want to call it. So it's definitely something that needs to be done, and the road hazard is the biggest thing. So we'll take a look at that. And then I went down, we also talked about the intersection of Berry Road, Bear Mountain Road, Mahoney Road, and Pratt Hill. And Diane was talking about a diagonal culvert. I actually had her sketch it out, but I'm, I'm a north-southeast west guy. She showed me where she thought the culvert was going diagonally through the intersection and I couldn't even find it. There's two culverts, one on the east side, one on the west side. One of them goes from the bottom of Pratt Hill and the other one goes directly across from the bottom of Bear Mountain. So they're like this. And not too much of an issue except the one on the Bear Mountain side is plugged on the outlet. So that needs to be opened up, but it really doesn't even go anywhere. You know, it just ditches down the side of the road and it looks like it just pools up and then evaporates because they can't get out to Little Bear, so that's not an issue. But on the other side, on Pratt Hill, that you can tell got eroded at one time. And then it takes a right-hand turn and then it heads towards a stream that dumps into Little Bear.
Yeah.
So we'll have to definitely take a look at that. But then Kathy Low is talking about one a little further down the road towards, it's actually right next to the Jones Road and just before the walking trail going up to Bear Mountain. And that one, it's definitely had extreme runoff issues. But, but the brook itself is in very good condition on the inlet side. There's no sediment, there's no sand. There's really nothing coming from uphill there. But if you do look down, like Kathy Low said, there's the embankments all eroded out really wide and there's tree roots there. And that must have been during one of the extreme weather runs.
Right, right, yeah.
And the road itself isn't pooshed right there. So there might have been overtopping going on, but it's not really that severe.
Right. Diane?
So what you have in your hand is what we discussed at the road committee is our priority roads, that entire paper. So we do believe that Mahoney Road, that is eroding into the road, is really our first concern. Our second one is the intersection of Pratt, Berry, Mahoney, however you want to look at whichever intersection. That large culvert, there is significant erosion coming down from Bear Mountain that is heading for Little Bear. There is a lot of dirt in there, you can see it going that way, and that is a significant problem contributing to the runoff of Little Bear Pond.
Is that the big one on Bear Mountain Road? Is that the big one? Before you get to Cemetery?
No. So if you, if you are on, say Pratt Hill, you come to the intersection, you take a right right there, that culvert right there, that runs from.
Mahoney Road goes parallel to Mahoney Road. Right back in that ditch is all rounded up right there. And then it takes a right-hand turn and goes into the stream.
Yes.
Well, we'll take a look at that as a group. And we think that needs to be a priority, we'd love that.
So that's, I just wanted to, we know that there are a lot of other issues, but these are our priorities so that the remainder, what roads we have are not going to be eroded from these problems. Because if these problems can turn into major problems and if we can fix these more quickly, that would be an idea.
We have to do, we have to do Pratt Hill first, Mahoney Road too.
Right, well, if, if we're putting Mahoney, if we're putting Pratt Hill out to bid, which we are, then, and Ben's looking for work. His, his road report says he wants to start next week. So I want a list of priorities, and if he's not going to be able to give them to us for whatever reason, then working with the road committee, then the road committee can give them to us and we can give them a target list. Another thing on the road report from Ben mentioned the gentleman who mows the sides of the road. Hood. And it says the price is going to be higher than last year, but I don't know what last year's was, I need to make sure it's in front of me.
One ten, one ten an hour? Was it five thousand, something like that? His contract was one ten an hour.
One ten, that's going to be higher. Hundred and ten. That's what it was last year, that's what it is now.
And you haven't signed a contract for this year?
He hasn't given us one, has he? Don't you think we ought to know what he's going to charge us before?
Mm-hmm. Don't plug that out.
That would be great. So it's last year. Yes, sir.
My opinion, Ben should be decided what is and isn't going to be done with the roads and when. And if you have a problem with the roads, you can call him. I called him up because I wanted to know why in last week's report, I think you didn't read.
I don't read reports, they're up to everybody.
I had a report from Ben last week.
Yes, sir.
And the last, the last line in that report said something about he was going to hire a lawyer. And I, and I called him up and asked him why he was going to need a lawyer. And he said, "Well, it's just as old as resort." And I said, "Well, okay, sorry to bother you." And he said, "Call me anytime. I want anybody to call me anytime and anything they need." So Ben's in charge of the roads, not the select board and not the road committee.
That's not true.
Well, it is. Ben is road commissioner, he's elected by the.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right.
I know, thank you, I really appreciate your input. We're not going to tolerate that kind of behavior in here. Absolutely, I want you to have your say, just like I let you. But we're not going to. I said, "I want you to have your say," that's why I called on you first, Bridger.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, all right, Ben is road commissioner, elected.
Yes, that is correct. Diane?
So Ben, road commissioner, did receive that email along with you guys at the same time.
With this list of roads?
Right.
Terrific. Do we have a copy of the road commissioner draft description here?
If you get this tattoo online.
I'm sure that can be the best way to read it, but.
After last night's meeting, I went home. There seemed to be a little bit of contradiction between the competitive bidding and the road committee, specifically bid committee. And so mulling this over and looking back and forth between one and the other, looking at the competitive bidding in our administrative ordinance two, that all major purchases, contracts, or agreements shall be subject to a competitive quote, bid, or proposal process with final selection, subject to the approval of the select board. The specific nature of said competitive process shall be determined by the select board, dependent on circumstances, including whether competitive bidding is necessary in each individual circumstance. The select board shall not be bound to accept the lowest quote, bid, or proposal. So going back over, it was determined in our select board meetings and at the advice of the roads committee in the absence of the road commissioner, by default, it was put out to bid, hence the forming of the bids committee last night. Last night, it was brought to the attention that the bids committee shall have the authority limited to whether the proposed expense shall be advertised for competitive bidding. I needed that explained to me because it does not read that way that the bids committee has the authority to determine whether or not it will go out to bid. So can you see the contradiction here between the competitive bidding? Are you offering a resource?
Go ahead.
It, it says that the selectmen can recommend to get a job that they think needs to go to bid. Form a bid committee, appoint the selectmen. But it does say the bid committee has the authority to decide whether or not it does need to go to bid. You can select the winning bidder or turn them down. You can select the winning bidder or turn them down. That's what I...
There's terrible contradiction in the wording of these two, just in those two elements of this ordinance. So if the select board has determined that it is going out to bid, what is the point?
They recommend, they see a need for it, they recommend it, either the road commissioner or the selectmen, recommend it to form a bid committee. And then they decide, they look at everything, decide whether...
It doesn't make any sense. We need a laptop, we got to bring into the...
That's their job. To analyze and decide.
The bid specs.
Whether it should go to bid or not. That's what it says.
I was very surprised.
And that's the contradiction. Because here it's saying that we have determined that it will go to bid.
Right, so you're going to recommend.
Right? And then they're saying, well, no, we're not putting it out to bid. There's terrible contradiction.
We don't even know what it's going to cost, because nobody will give us, besides a ballpark high in the sky. We don't even know if it's going to be fixed the way, so it's not running down the road. We did put a lot of money into it two years ago, and it's down at the bottom of the road.
And then, Richard, to speak into the authority, who has the authority statute, I don't really know how to read, 23 MRS 2701, states that the road commissioner, let me back up a little bit, both the municipal officers generally and the road commissioner specifically are responsible for ensuring that the municipal ways, bridges, will be safe and convenient for travelers. Correct, we're in agreeance. There has been much confusion about who makes the final decision concerning roads, because the road commissioner is often elected and cannot be removed or formally disciplined by the municipal officers. However, state law makes it clear that even in this situation, the municipal officers have the final say over the road commissioner's responsibilities. Statute. In the absence of a statute, charter provision, or ordinance to the contrary, any decision involving the duties and responsibilities of the road commissioner shall be made by a majority of the select board, whose decision shall be final. The road commissioner, therefore, while in charge of highway repair and maintenance within the municipality, must act according to the general policies or guidelines as determined by the municipal officers. Unless the municipality uses a very specific line item budget, the municipal officers have the authority to decide how money will be spent regarding roadwork and road personnel. The road commissioner has no inherent authority to incur expenses or enter contracts on behalf of the municipality. This can only be done if authorized by the municipal officers. Even where the road commissioner is given authority to engage a road crew or contract for road maintenance and repair, the select board retains the final authority to approve dispersments for all municipal expenditures, including roadwork. For additional discussion of the relationship between the road commissioner and the municipal officers, see Chapter Eight of MML Legal Circuses, Roads Manual. Three times in that summary, yes, we are in authority over the roads commissioner to determine what will be done and how much will be spent. Statute, not our rules, law.
Diane?
So in our administrative ordinance, Part Two, under Financial Procedures, two dash twenty-two, Select Board Authorization, all dispersments from funds of the town shall be subject to approval of the select board. With the exception of general assistance and winter roads, no dispersment shall be made at all in Bear Town. Never have been, ever.
It should have been.
No one has ever received a dime without the select board's approval, ever. Never.
It's already spent, right. But it's already spent. We get the invoice, but we don't even know what's coming in or what's been worked on.
Because of the rising cost of everything, taxes included, I sat with Kathy Lowe the other night after one of our meetings, and I said, we have this much money. We have a list of priorities, and we have a road that needs extensive work. We need to take this money and do as much of that as we possibly can. And we are making every effort to try to do this the right way, with communication, with our roads commissioner. And we have been met with resistance, and that's to put it kindly.
Oh, yes, sir.
So your counter resistance is from who?
The roads commissioner.
Question, comment?
Oh, yes, Lenny.
Okay. Kathy, I listened to everything you said. If you've sketched, it makes sense. But towns are allowed to have ordinances, which are the laws of the town. They can't be more restrictive than the state. But they can be, no, they can be more restrictive.
They can't be less restrictive.
Right.
But, I mean, we have a description of what a road commissioner is in our administrative ordinance.
No, the road is...
The language in those two elements.
The ordinance is on local law. This is what I was telling Kathy, I went to training for planning.
So the job description for the road commissioner is through the state. We do not have a job description for the road commissioner. In last week's letter that the road commissioner sent out as his report, it stated he was not qualified to make bids. It stated he was not ready or qualified to do that after, what, twenty, forty years of working on roads? That concerns me, that we can't get some sort of pricing ahead of time, because I want to stretch our money. I want to get as much done as possible.
I respect that. I'm just saying, ordinances on road road laws.
Peggy?
So if he really thinks he's not qualified to make bids, maybe he's always worked the manner he has, and he hasn't done that kind of perspective analyzing of what's going to be required. Maybe somebody needs to go talk to him, have a face-to-face meeting, and figure out where he is. Maybe he can't do this, maybe he's not used to doing it. That's just a suggestion, I don't know.
Diane, could you stand, so everyone at home can hear you too? You're still dining.
So multiple times, personally, I have gone to Bim's. Multiple times, multiple hours, from the very first of July until yesterday. I have offered to do stretches. I have offered to break down anything in detail on his request. He has not wanted to participate in any of that. So I have offered...
So here are...
Yes. I have offers, so as Kathy Lowe has offered to help along with other people outside of any town committees.
And if I remember correctly, Wesley came up with a wonderful breakdown, a better way to get pricing for Pratt Hill, and brought it to him. And unfortunately, did not want to use the form or participate at all.
I'm just saying, what she said, what she said. I'm just saying, you know? If you're at this data, what can you do? Right? You could have a whole hill.
Richard, you were next, sir.
Well, a comment and not a question. I think you're going to put it out for bid. I think you're going to find, anything you get from out of town is going to be a lot more than you want to spend. That's my comment. My question is, why at last week's meeting did you not read Bim's road?
Diane?
So she did read the first part of the road report, which talked about one road he was going to work on. The rest of that was not a road report, that was a statement from him.
I don't care, it was still what his road was. And it's always been relevant to selectmen.
Actually, we do not read reports at the meeting. I might make a mention, which I didn't read any of it last week. What I did was say, I see Bim has worked on this. But we do not read the whole planning report. We don't read the minutes from the road committee. So, and it was emailed out, so that everyone could see it. And if it doesn't get emailed out, usually Leanne will have it right there on that table.
Okay, I'll explain why. Like Diane said, I've been up and I've talked to Bim. I had my sister go with me one day, tried to talk with Bim. She was working, her husband and I did the same thing Bim does. And, yes, he is stubborn. He's been working on the roads thirty, I don't know how many years he's been road commissioner. And he is stubborn, and his itemized bills turn in every week. At the end of a job, he turns them in, what he's done. And it's because of places. But I don't know how this all started, with this itemizing before he does a job. His way of thinking is, okay, Pratt Hill, the paper Wesley had, how many loads of gravel you're going to take? Wow. His way of thinking is, if he puts down, say, thirty-five loads of gravel, and it takes sixty, he's afraid, well, I'll come back and say, well, you said thirty-five loads of gravel, how come you've got sixty down here? That's his way of thinking, is why he doesn't want to do this. Which, in a way, I can see his point, but...
Then all he needs to say is, it actually, these are the reasons why. I mean, it's like getting your car fixed. You get in there, and you're going in for a muffler, and they go, oh, by the way, that whole pipe has to be done, so my original quote is not right, because we now have to do this. We understand there's going to be changes. We're just trying to look for a ballpark. If you're going to grade this road, what does it normally cost? You're going to grade this, this is going to be near a thousand dollars, and this is going to be this. So that we know, as money goes down, that we're still going to have enough money to do the priority project, not spend all the money. And then when it comes time to do Pratt Hill or Mahoney, that we don't have the money for the priority roads.
Okay, last night, he did give me a call. It was his recommendation to not do the hill path, not tear it up. And I think, yes, he was right, not tearing it up, wait till spring. And he said he would quote a price, but like, he said, three thousand dollars to put gravel in and get the road, get that hill sort of smoothed, and the whole patching, get it ready for winter. Wesley said, three thousand dollars, he get that hill smoothed out.
Is there any way that he can give us that information so that we don't have to hear it secondhand or in writing?
And we know we want culverts.
He's able to verbalize it for you, so...
Yes, yes, we'll probably be quick, yes.
And those culverts, we already own the culverts. We bought a ton of culverts with Pratt Hill, now years ago. So it would be, you know, there's parts that have to get done. But again, I want to reiterate, the reason we're sitting here today doing weekly meetings, which everyone else has got stuff to do, just like I do at night, I'm just out of work, is because we couldn't get a straight answer from anybody. It's gone from sixty to fifty to forty to fifty. We don't know what kind of product he's going to use. We don't... First of all, it's fifty to sixty.
Fifty thousand, he said. Fifty thousand, he can get that road prepared for paving. Now, I guarantee you, we put this all stuff out to bid, and it's going to be, we'll be breaking into the general fund money to finish it.
We're putting it out to bid since we haven't gotten any bids, or any breakdown on what the products are going to use. Because what we used two years ago, a lot of it's down the hill. It wasn't built right. That's my concern. Diane, you're next.
I have two comments. One is, when we had a road committee meeting, I think it was our first road committee meeting, he stated that because we were not going to pave this road, that putting any additional gravel on this hill was going to cause more erosion going down to the lake. He said we could not do a dirt on a hill. We could put dirt on flat roads, but never on a hill. So I don't understand now why we're going back to discussing only putting dirt on the hill.
I don't think it would be all that much. It was just to smooth it up. Because right now, I was telling you the other day, and right now, there's like the condoleezza ring, there's like a little, I think like a ditch, like it's just a runoff. Probably four inches deep, maybe four or five inches deep. Where the runoff has come down the road, we're just going to take that and smooth it up to make it a little not less bumpy for the winter. It ain't like he's going to haul in loads and loads and loads of gravel. It's just to smooth that little runoff that's coming down off the hill, get it ready, and do the patching.
So my second part was, we have already decided this is going out to bid. We have a bid committee, we have a workshop. This is a mute point, it's going out to bid.
Look, come on, ask him, look. Yep, sorry. So let's move forward.
My concern is at one of our last select board meetings, there was a recommendation that came in for some washout on Church Street by the cemetery. And when I had gone in, now Bim had agreed to go and take a look at it, and then get back to us on what it would need and what he thought it would cost. And the next thing I know, there's a bill, not a bill, a check cut out to him with an invoice. So how did that happen?
I think he was in the hostel at that time.
No, it wasn't?
No. Well, it got put in late.
It was not done.
Nothing was done weeks ago, last week.
The complaint came in last summer, nothing got done. And then another complaint was filed by...
So what I'm specifying is that the gravel was put in when last we knew and had suggested to him, could you please go look at it and get back to us? And next thing, there's an invoice and a check made out to him. How did that happen? What happened in between from, can you go check it out and get back to us, to the work's done, here's the bill? And so this...
I told him he did it.
And this is exactly why we are asking for pre-authorization. We have this much money. We have this much money, and we have to do as much as we possibly can with it. And if you're just going to go willy-nilly, then the money's going to be gone, and the work's not going to be done.
Wesley?
I have one question for somebody. I've heard multiple times, if Bim is not comfortable making estimates out of dollar, even guessing at what it's going to cost to do something. If he can't, where did fifty thousand dollars come from? Fifty to sixty thousand come from on Pratt Hill? Where'd he get that number, just a... That looks good?
Yes.
I don't know.
Alan, and then Lenny.
I got a scenario here for you guys.
We're going to stay on topic, though.
We're on topic. So it's about bidding and paying for stuff before and doing jobs that you're not supposed to do, because you asked them to do money. So I was putting a subjug system in, an engineer, I said, if you could do a subjug system in my front yard, and then I would look at it, and if it's what I want, I will pay you. Well, if he didn't do it that way, he put it in my backyard. So he decided he was going to get the money for doing a subjug system. And I said, no, you're not. So I had a guy design my subjug system in my front yard the way I want it. So I had to go to court. When I went to court, and the judge said to me what happened, and I told him, and I showed him the plan from the guy that put it in the front yard. And what did he say to the other guy? Why didn't you do it that way? I didn't pay him a dang thing. You're in the same scenario here, guys.
Lenny, could you stand too, please? Thank you.
What I think is happening, and I could be off-base, but this is where my brain is going. Okay? We have a road commissioner who is elected, who is responsible for the roads. And there seems like there's micromanagement going on here. I can understand a big project like Pratt Hill, you want to put it up to bid. But every little thing that the road commissioner does, that's such a big change. I think he's probably feeling really disrespected and, you know, undercut, because that's not how it's been. And the town hasn't been achieved. Like, there were rumors spread that Bim was cheating the town, spending town money.
Certainly didn't come from us, because that was...
I know where it came from, but I'm not going to say. That he was spending money on his own stuff, that he was helping out some friend who was a logger and took money he should have been on that in Portland. Yeah, there's just been a lot of undercurrent going on. I mean, you do trust an elected official to do things, don't you?
Exactly, and we run the purse strings and the budget. And thirty percent at town meeting, thirty percent of that budget, thirty percent was cut from that budget.
But do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, and what we asked is...
Running, struggling while you're kidding is somebody feeling untrusted, undercut.
We're asking him to follow the rules that he should have been following all along. Working with the road committee, setting up priority roads, not I have a plan in my head and that's the way it's gonna be, which is what we were told.
But it's all getting done publicly. Has the select board ever sat down with the road commissioner without an audience, without all this? And said, hey, as we know, things have been done this way, but this is how we want to do it. How can we work that out?
Well, we can certainly try to do that. He hasn't been attending, he hasn't been attending meetings, he hasn't been attending committee meetings. So, I mean, he, we would have loved to have seen him tonight.
But if you feel undercassed, unappreciated, you know, if you feel that, it's really hard to come out in public and hear it all again.
Well, it's a really good thing that feelings aren't a good gauge for truth.
Well, you know, that's, that's open to interpretation.
Maybe we should do that.
Leanne?
You guys can't meet out of a public meeting. And not just gonna show up on his doorstep, so just be careful. Right?
Chris, go ahead, Diane.
So yes, correct. No one can meet with him outside, but they certainly can have an executive session. Then they can all meet with him. And that way he would have to come in first. So we had tried multiple times to meet with him in multiple public meetings and committees and he will not. So that may be a possibility, but...
Seems like, yeah.
I think if he felt supported at those meetings, you'd have a whole different ballgame going on here.
I'm not really sure how all the efforts on the select board and the committee's part can be misconstrued as anything but support.
Well, you might wanna ask him.
Well, that's what they were here.
It is the executive session. What's really going on?
Diane, we go.
So as we stated, I get cathy loaded and campfire.
No, I thought you were just making a really good suggestion.
I, I... We have a session, this is not, we have never said anything about what he's done with funds. It is just about budget. If we have a certain amount of money for a road, but that money doesn't go to that road and it goes somewhere else, then you need to know that because that means a road's not gonna get done. Hence Pratt Hill hasn't been accomplished in the last two years because there was no money.
Oh, I haven't heard anyone with these public meetings being supportive of Bim. Not once.
And Richard, you're next.
Yeah, well, she mentioned Michael managing and I think is wrong. We try to get him to account for every pill that's going into the road before it works. But anyway, that's that. I would like to know what you think the people in Hottford and around Hottford think of the job that Bim has done on roads over the past decades? Have he done a good job or a lousy job?
I'm pretty sure so.
And if he's done a good job, then why are you trying to micromanage?
So I don't believe we are, first of all, Bim is very aware, including on Facebook. We have all complimented Bim. Back at the beginning of the summer, when he was out ill, even before he was out ill, at budget meeting, we have said to him, we appreciate all your hard work. We, you do a good job, Bim. I'm not sure what else we have to do, give him a prize or, but he's doing a good job. But the problem is, is that... Because we're not micromanaging.
Yes, you are.
It's accountability.
It's accountability.
It's like money.
We've got, we've got a bunch of money that has to go out for a bond. October 1st, and how much is that, Leanne?
Three fifty-four.
What happened to the...
Hold on!
What happened to the sum of old money?
The summer road budget is over three hundred thousand. A hundred and fifty-four thousand of that is going to pay off the bond that was taken out just a couple of years ago.
One year, not paid off.
Right, that's just one payment, which only leaves us with a hundred and seventy-eight thousand for the rest of all of summer roads. Not knowing how we were gonna... Can we keep sidebar computations to a minimum, please? So we have a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, we have Pratt Hill that has to be done. We have some priority roads that have to be done. And that's thirty percent less than what he had a previous year. And they didn't, I mean, they, they, I know the budget committee made a recommendation to cut culverts out of the budget because we already had culverts and we have FEMA or grant money for other culverts. But otherwise, they cut like thirty percent trying to keep our milk rates down. And so you can't just start and look, here's my budget and I'm gonna get all these roadwork done. Thirty percent of it's been cut. So now we have to manage that because we're on the financial side and he's on the roadwork side. So we need to make sure that the priorities are done first. And you can't just do that by going, I'm gonna go do these ten roads and I'll tell you about it when I bill you. We have to have priorities, just like in your household budget. That's how I pay my mortgage, it's how I pay my taxes. I have to budget each amount so that I know at the end, I'm not on that lean list that's coming right out. Or that I have enough money to buy my milk bread and, and pay my electric bill. And we are all sworn to follow and protect and to do what's best for our town. And that's what we're trying to do. Yes, hi, I'm sorry, I don't know.
I'm Charmaine, Diane.
Hi Charmaine, how are you?
I just have a question.
Sure.
It seems to be that everybody is at a great impasse. How are you gonna get the roads done?
We are gonna have a priority list.
But if, if the communication line is broken and there, and it seems to be very broken for whatever reason, how are you gonna get the roads done? Are you gonna send them all out to bid?
Hmm, can't afford that.
That's not the plan. Bim's looking for work and we're trying to get a home down list.
But what I'm saying is, it's not working. Whatever is going on is not working. And you as selectmen are the only people that have control over how this gets done. So what I'm asking is, how is it gonna get done?
This is what we're actually working on with our road committee. Diane?
So if we have a road commissioner that wanted to come to the committee so we could advise the selectmen what needed to be done, that would be easy. That is not working. However, if he so chooses not to work with us, work with the selectmen, it will go out to bid. It has to go out in a lump sum to get all our stuff done. We've got to have a road.
Yes.
Okay, so then my suggestion would be, since you're at such a great impasse, for whatever reason, it's like dealing with a two-year-old. Not saying Bim, I mean everybody. You give them options. You give them choices. And if you're at such a great impasse that nothing or minimal is getting done, then what are you gonna do? You can't wait another week, three weeks, five weeks, ten weeks. What is your plan to do now? And I don't want to hear this because this is not a solution since it's, you, you're not working together. You're, we're supposed to be the team, this is protocol. No, no, what I'm saying is if, if Bim is not willing to do what you want him to do, what are you going to do now to get this done?
That's, what are you looking for, for an answer?
I wanna know what you're doing. Are you gonna put everything out to bid?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
She's first and then you get her second.
He's obviously been the road commissioner of say for twenty years. Well, you know what? The twenty years that we've had a select board that was run a certain way has caused a lot of issues. And now we have a select board that wants to do what's right for the town, not just what's for Bim. It's for the town and our people. And that's, they have to fix that. And you can't, they can't fix that in just a couple of months that they've been a select board. They need to gather their stuff. This has been twenty years of crap that's happened in this town that needs to be straightened out. We're not gonna get it done in one summer, unfortunately. My home stinks, but hey, I'm not gonna complain anymore because this is a priority.
There are people that are happy to put in estimates, proposals for the small jobs, so... Sorry.
I have to go to Richard next.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, Peggy's next, sorry, then Richard, Peggy.
So the road committee says that Honee Road is a priority. Are you not gonna start on it until you give bid? Because you need to, you wanna know beforehand how much it's gonna cost? Or if there's a rainstorm or something gets washed out and you're gonna wait until we decide? Then you've got enough forward information about how much it's gonna cost to fix it at what level? So you need to be prepared.
We're gonna take this priority list, which we have one, two, and three. And we're gonna talk to Bim about it and see if he'll do it. He, his report states that he has work he wants to start next week. Well, here's some great work he can start next week. And if we can get some idea of how much we think that's gonna cost, even if it's a ballpark, at least we've got something. I want Bim and his crew to work, but we also need to make sure we're getting the priority stuff first. And not just going over and, and doing a road that isn't traveled well, that looks like it's gonna be fine for the next three or four months when these things have to be done first. They're priorities. They got holes in the road, they've got, they need repatched or people are losing half their car in it. Those are priority roads, so I, I wanna give Bim a chance.
Well, I understand.
Another chance.
You changed your process. He, he said he's ready to work next week. How many weeks are you gonna be doing this back and forth until you start? That's what I'm asking.
Well, unfortunately, the select board used to meet every two weeks, which is why we've started meeting every week, starting this week. This is an off week. We don't usually meet today. Because we can't make decisions, we're not supposed to talk to each other. We can't meet between meetings. We're not allowed to, which makes it very difficult to run the town like a business, to run it so that we stay within our budget.
Can somebody go and go talk in the beginning of the week, the ready starts today? What do you wanna work on here? I'm gonna sit, I'm gonna stand here and ask you, you gonna go down there? How many loads of gravel, how many hours and, okay, I'm gonna go, you know, talk to the...
That's what you don't like.
For the week's work. I'm just saying, how can you do this?
He's gonna have some idea, he's been doing this for twenty years. He knew that it was gonna take fifty thousand to do what he wanted to do on Pratt Hill. All right, I'm sorry, I'm missing arms here. I got Lenny and David.
I just wanna say, that sounds like a good place.
Go talk to Monday, get it all out.
It's really positive. We're here now.
David, and then Diane.
Yeah, I'd like to address it.
Because this meeting's supposed to last an hour.
I'd like to address the comment of we're at an impasse and we won't be getting anywhere. And that is probably from the outside looking in, it probably looks like that. We're all volunteers and we're kinda newly committed to doing this work. And the procedural things are kinda, we're stumbling along a little bit. But we're getting there. We are trying to do what the right thing is here. And even though it might look like we're not getting there, we actually are gaining all the time. And we're pretty close to actually giving a final bid proposal to them. But I know it's been a long drawn out thing and, and to address you, Lenny, we're, we're not disrespecting Bim. We don't, we're holding people accountable, is all we're doing.
I'm, I didn't say any word. I said, I thought that might be his perception. That's all I said.
Okay. Was there someone else? It was Diane, and then you get to go, Charmaine. Go ahead, Diane.
So I just wanted to answer your question. So I have gone personally multiple times with Bim, so, which of yesterday morning? I sat down with that priority list with him. He told me how much of everything I estimated, I spent hours typing that up for him. It is completely estimated if he wanted to do it, but he refused to turn it in.
Oh, really? So when you get...
So it has been done. When he pulls his ears still on, you do it.
Correct.
Charmaine?
I wasn't talking about the committees.
Oh.
I was not talking about...
Well, they're waiting, they're waiting for our input though.
But they're in charge.
Yes.
Right, so I was not talking about the committees. The committees are doing all the work.
All right. Leanne, has Bim ever gone over the budget? Past years? Do you remember?
Yes.
A better question would be, has he ever gone under budget and said, well, I don't need that much money? We have circuses this summer, did that happen?
It's been a little bit before.
Yeah, that's what I thought of.
Is he there to spend it?
I would too.
I appreciate it, oh, quick, quick.
I just wanna say, I spent a lot of time in town office yesterday looking at things for the future, the company's plan, and I made a little chart of what figures I could get from two thousand nineteen to recently on every road about how much was expended, how much was budgeted and whether, you know, just to take a look. If I think if you look longitudinally, you'll see how, how often anything goes over the budget because of the, the way we've been doing things has been pretty, pretty consistent. I mean, there's certain emergencies that seem to cause more expenditures on one particular road. It doesn't seem like generally anything is, is outlandish when you look serially on each road over several years. That's why I went to you, so, cause I think information is important for these decisions.
And if he goes by the budget that he submitted last year, he'll be thirty percent over. And that's why we wanna make sure, because we only have so much money in that pail, so...
Well, was his budget per road, like it's listed in the town as well?
Correct, yeah.
Well, then you, you as a committee could probably go over and decide which ones could be eliminated and put those kidding to another part of the market.
Well, you see, that would be Michael managing him.
Yeah.
No, no. And you think they could just...
It was voted on as one, so any money can be switched around.
He flows his money all over the place in the road budget. And we don't have a problem with that.
Absolutely.
We don't say, you moved a two nickels over here. We don't do that. We just wanna make sure that the roads, we've got some roads that really need a lot of work that were not touched last year. Even though they had money in the budget, they weren't. And we have big jobs, the road committee, we've always supposed to have and it never seems to last. Bim can't use the computer. He calls his reports in to Leanne. What we need is, the road committee is there to help. And so we'll say, help him get things together and type things up and get things ready for bid. That's what they're there for, it's a team effort. Dave Bowen?
So you, you looked at roads yesterday. Look at, look at what was budgeted for Pratt Hill for the last four, five years.
Okay, so Pratt Hill in two thousand, they spent, twenty twenty, they spent twenty-five nineteen, the next year twenty-one, seventy-six, two oh three thousand. And it was approved for fifty thousand in twenty-two, but none was spent. Was that due with lots of storms and you had to do a lot of these repairs or maybe didn't get to Pratt Hill? And that was twenty-two. Twenty-three was seventy-one, seven sixty-eight that went to Pratt Hill. So Pratt Hill in the last several years had, well, twenty-one and twenty-three together has been, well, about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Yes, so that was...
What, wait, what was spent on Pratt Hill last year?
Twenty-three, seventy-one thousand, seven hundred, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
He didn't, he didn't do anything on Pratt Hill besides break it.
So there's actual... Yeah, cause I, I was something, I was, yeah, I was thinking, there were so many places that, that we gave, or approved or what was spent, but that kind of...
It was appropriated, I believe it was a hundred and fifty thousand.
That was, that was for this year, twenty-four.
No.
Well, it was approved to be spent in twenty-four, a hundred and fifty at one point.
So that's twenty-three.
Okay.
June three, twenty-four.
Okay. Yeah, that's actually a few of the things.
Actual was spent, I think it was around twelve hundred dollars.
I didn't see that, and of course I looked at, I'm just saying, I didn't see that. I, I, I went over these...
So there was money appropriated since two thousand nineteen and a lot of it.
All right, I wanna thank everyone for... All right, I wanna thank everyone for coming this evening, and, uh, this meeting is adjourned.